Court. Court in the court. Good evening, all. I've called the December, I mean, April twenty eighth meeting to order. Welcome you all to tonight and would ask that our clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Brenner. Gallagher.
Present.
Caulfield.
Present.
Teager.
Present.
Rollin.
Present.
McNallyn.
Here.
Ian Neeran.
Present. And on the note of Councilmember Brenner, I will say he is out doing his city council duties. He's not shirking his duty here this evening. Prior to scheduling this meeting, we had scheduled an Arbor Day, Earth Day slash programming event tonight at the Tompkins Center. And of course, that happens under his tutelage because he chairs our community engagement committee. So tonight at seven P M. at Tompkins, D T E is present advising the community and educating the community on how you can implement green initiatives in that in your home. So he did say you could get an excuse if you want to leave this meeting and go there because it's probably way cooler and there is coffee and cookies there. But nonetheless, that is where Councilmember Brenner is. He is up to speed on everything that's going to be discussed tonight and will watch the recording of the meeting subsequently to make sure he has the full context and full discussion. With that, we move on to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is our public comment. Certainly always warmly welcome the community. Community is, we're not a team without our community members, right? So we're glad for those that are here today and for those who also might be watching on TV. I'll just remind everybody you do have three minutes. I do believe that that's good meeting management. I can assure you, you don't want me deciding who goes longer or who goes shorter. So when we have that clock, it keeps us on track and we will always do our best to be good customer service agents as well. And any issue we can resolve within that time, we will do our best to. And if not, make sure the community gets to the staff members that they need to resolve those issues. We do ask that you please state your name and the city that you're from. And certainly, if you can't be here tonight, you can always approach any one of us by email at citycouncil@grosspoint.org. So with that, I will open the public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to be heard? Since everybody's looking the other way, I'm going to assume those are no. So we will close the public comment and move on to the primary purpose for our meeting tonight, which is to discuss the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three F Y budget. And of course, this is our responsibility as a body to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility as provided for in the city charter. Tonight is a workshop. There are no decisions that will be made tonight. We're here to hear an overview from the staff and to give the community an opportunity to get oriented to where we stand from a financial standpoint. Once this meeting is complete, the next step will occur at our regular May city council meeting, at which time there will be a public hearing for the public to be heard yet again. And at that time, the council will be asked to consider a number of resolutions all related to the financial situation for the community. So I'll be watching for that in the future. And tonight I will now turn it over to our city manager Seisler and our finance director Blay Hut, who have worked very diligently and ardently to get us to where we're at tonight to give us that overview.
Well, thank you, Mayor Hodges, members of council and the public. So before you tonight, I provided in Jane as well budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The conversation that's going to be had tonight is in regards to our general fund and our other funds within the city budget, how they work, what we're looking at moving forward and how we can bring some resolutions as well to the community. So I'd like to start off with all local governments are required to prepare to administer an annual balanced budget. How well the city has performed administering the budget is then reviewed the end of the fiscal year by an independent auditor. And as a result of the two thousand eight recession and restriction state law and revenue growth, city fund reserves fell. And so what I'd like to discuss further is how did these fall? And these are called, this is headly. The headly rollback and headly override. Although it might appear that a community with an annual increase in uncapped property values would benefit monetarily, uncapped values are treated as growth on existing property and trigger heavily rollbacks. For local governments levying at their headly maximum authorized millage, rolling back the maximum authorized millage rate reduces the revenue that would have been generated from these increased property values. The increase in the taxable value of property not transferred is capped at the lesser of inflation or five percent. Even though the taxable value of a particular piece of property increases at the rate of inflation, the military for the entire community is rolled back as a result of the increase in the total taxable value of the community. The net result, a less than inflationary increase in actual dollars received from property taxes. Consequently, the nineteen ninety-four change to the general property tax act has prevented local governments of being able to share the benefits of any substantial market growth in existing property values. In the case of Gross Point Park, our taxable value went to about seven hundred three million dollars, which represents an increase of four and a half percent from the prior year. The value rose higher than the rate of inflation, which requires the millage rates to be rolled back. The inflation rate for two thousand twenty-two is three point three percent. As a further example, Gross Point Park and other communities have charter amendments or charter that actually lays out, you know, what the actual allowable mills that you're allowed to charge. A great example for Gross Point Park is that by charter, we actually allow for general operating, which is general operations city of twenty mills. Currently, we are at ten point five nine. So we're missing almost, you know, ten mills there that when our charter was established in the fifties that we're missing of that revenue. Further, to look back in two thousand twelve and the general operating knowledge, we were at eleven dollars and forty-seven cents for general operating fund. Now we are down to ten point five nine. Within the last consistently six, seven years, that rate keeps rolling back even further, which challenges our community in regards to providing the services that residents expect. And so we're having to get creative of how we're going to manage the budget and how we function as a community. And so this is something that we've rolled up our sleeves over the years. We continue to look at for evaluating and seeing if there's areas of you know, whether we make some cuts to some services and how we gain revenue. And so that's what part of this discussion is going to lead to tonight. The property tax revenues have now recovered and surpassed the pre-recession levels. However, between that time, the city lost hundreds of thousands in revenue. And some of this revenue could have helped us in the long run for paying, you know, for our pension liabilities, which is a current really big number for our city budget. And as an example, in some of the staff reductions we did in two thousand eight, we were at eighty staff members in Gross Point Park. Today, we're at sixty-six. So still being able to provide those services that we were back in two thousand eight, which some are cut with sixty-six people is pretty commendable of this community. And not only is this happening in Gross Point Park, but this has happened across the state of Michigan. And so the city's adapted meeting the service demands of the residents with reduced staff and will continue for how we service the residents. The city is still rebounding from COVID nineteen in recent hikes in our inflation across the board. Now on to the general fund. So right now in our general fund, along with state shared revenue from sales and use taxes and franchise fees and business license fees, that's part of the general fund. State shared revenue in two thousand one was one point four million. Now, in two thousand one, now in two thousand twenty-two, we're at one point two million. So just think about that from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-two. All the inflation increases across the board that we really missed out on that revenue, not only from just headly, but also from the state of Michigan in regards to the revenue sharing. Thankfully, it has been rising every year, which is helping us out, but we're still not quite where we'd like to be at. The portion of this general fund budget is comprised of discretionary funds since the council city manager can allocate the funds to program services in the area. General fund dollars are used to support city services as public safety, public works, parks, community development, administrative support services. Just a couple of highlights of, you know, what we're seeing some challenges right now with inflation. D T E board approved a six percent budget increase, which is budget within these funds. The city with our liability insurance because of the June and July storm events, our liability insurance is going up. And so we are currently seeking proposals right now and working with the customers to see about providing a cheaper rate for the city of Gross Point Park moving forward. As an additional area, what could we do potentially down the road to bring in revenue to the city to help out in our budget? The city does own several properties that down we can, the council could consider selling to generate additional revenues. Those include certain easements, city properties and such. And there are several employees eligible for retirement in the coming year. And those employees, what we could consider and what we're looking to implement right now is a hiring freeze across the board. And so these will certainly help our challenges for the upcoming fiscal year as we look to provide additional revenue to this budget. The city's acquiring, we're looking to acquire bids for cutting lawn cutting services at the parks and boulevards and gardening services, potentially bringing that into the Tifa district. And why I wanted to highlight that is, you know, with the Tifa and the DDA, they're able to help the city general fund out. As a good example, the public works building that was built, it is being built right now by the Tifa is in the Tifa district. And so if we had built that and it was in our city general fund, that's an additional three hundred grand that would have gone into the general fund as well. And thankfully, you know, with the help of the tax increment finance authority, we're able to save that off our general fund. And obviously as well, if there's certain services that we can save in parks and rec with the gardening staff and such of all the amenities that they have to do with gardening and watering, you know, that'll be a consideration. I'll have to talk with the Tifa board as well. Other areas that we're looking at, you know, for additional revenue sources, Gross Point Park in the past and even current has parking meters that are very outdated and they actually, we are the cheapest, but twenty-five cents per hour right now. If you'd like to park in our community in the business districts, and this is something that we seriously need to address because that is a a good income of revenue that comes in here. And so you know, the good news is that what we'll be looking to bring moving forward is you can bring your quarters and your credit card. So you're not going to be, you know, totally out of luck. Obviously, there's grants that are coming from the federal and state government through, you know, President Biden and the Congress that came to us. So obviously passed down to the state, we're going to look to apply for those grants. Considering of shared services, maybe there's certain contractual services with the other gross points and or vehicles and purchases that we can look to buy. Does it make sense that each Gross Point Park, you know, down the road has a ladder truck? When maybe we can consolidate, maybe it's three, you know, trucks as an example. These are the types of ideas that we have to get creative, not only in the park, but in the other points in order to, you know, combat our inflation. Another idea is we need to look at with our city employees and make sure that's fair and equitable, but as well as their compensation review. Something that, you know, looking at across the board and using member communities and looking at their data as well, are we paying employees fair across the board, but as well as there areas that we should make some adjustments in this so that it's fair. Gross Point Park has been fortunate with the Gross Point Park Foundation to date. Well, since nineteen eighty-five, we've actually had four point two given to us in amenities and such. So I do want to thank the Gross Point Park Foundation for all its assistance. Now I'm going to get into the different funds that are within the city's budget. Special revenue funds are major and local street funds, roads, rubbish, building, indigent defense fund, drug forfeiture fund and C B G or community development block grant. Component funds are DDA and Tifa. These funds are generated through tax capture and are spent within the area of each taxing jurisdiction. Enterprise funds consist of the Marina Fund and the Water Sewer Fund. Revenues are generated for the services provided Marina boats rentals and water and sewer services that are provided each home or business. Debt retirement funds or in our budget is numbers three oh five through three oh eight. That is our road millage, our public works building with Tifa, the city hall project that's currently ongoing and properties and of Emerald Ashore back in about two, was it two thousand seven, Jane?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Tax collections right now. Two thousand twenty-one, we gained about, we had about six point six million dollars in tax collections. Now we're at about six point seven or roughly we'll say about, you know, close to about a hundred thousand there. And if you flip to the next page, council, you'll look at our tax rates from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. And you can reflect looking at all the way from operating to public safety of that headly challenge that we're receiving where it's those rates have been rolled back over the years. For example, the public safety budget, which the voters of Gross Point Park passed was actually at two point seven five with that millage. Now it's been rolled back all the way to two point five six. And more than likely, that's going to keep happening to us. Some of the other challenges we're having in its frank conversation we'll have is that the health insurance and pension costs are the most significant fringe benefit cost to the city of Gross Point Park and also to other communities. It's just a part of you doing business and working with public safety and staff members that we want to take care of them, but also we have to address that these liabilities are tough on city budgets when we're not getting those additional revenues coming in. The public safety pension costs, for an example, are about one point seven million of the total two point two million, consisting of seventy-six percent of the fringe benefit cost for the entire city of Gross Point Park is just the public safety department. The remaining about five hundred thousand are other employees than public safety. MERS handles our pension plan, which is required by charter. And so just as an example of those pension costs, in two thousand seven, we paid six hundred sixty-one thousand. Now we're at two point two million. So, you know, take a gander at that. That's, that's, it's quite a jump. MERS utilized new tables that were adopted in two thousand twenty, which requires member cities to contribute a higher ARK payment to achieve the funding level sooner. Gross Point Park will achieve the funding level of sixty percent in two thousand twenty-seven. Currently, the city is funded at fifty-two percent and a corrective action plan is in place that was approved by the council and by the state of Michigan. Rising pension costs represent the most significant challenge to our financial stability. In the coming months, city administration will be compiling strategies to help manage rising costs. Most policy responses will involve cooperation with the unions at the negotiating table, which will be our public works department, our clerical and our public safety, which those contracts are up in June of twenty-three. So this is something city administration is looking at right now. I imagine we're going to have discussions fairly soon because we want to give plenty of time and opportunity for both sides of the table to discuss their opportunities. The O P A R retiree health insurance in January of two thousand twenty, the council approved the information implementation trust one fifteen to set aside funds to fund the unfunded healthcare liability. Previously, the city had always maintained a pay-as-you-go program. However, what we did with Gabea Roder Smith was looking at our act, our actuary firm was how could we reduce this liability? Well, what we did was the liability was reduced from thirty million to fifteen million as a result of establishing this trust one fifteen. Right now, each year sixty thousand will be budgeted deposit within the trust to reach the required funding level in accordance with the state requirements. Currently, right now, the city provides the opt-out provision for healthcare and will remain in effect until the current union contracts expire and as this city considers further options moving forward with negotiations. Major and local street funds, we have twenty-six miles of local streets and about eleven of major streets. Major and local street funds are through Act fifty-one dollars that come from the state of Michigan. And the road millage tax capture for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated at about six hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. The rubbish fund contract was negotiated with Green for Life and is for a five-year term at rates increasing at two and a quarter per year. Recycling rates are currently at three hundred sixteen thousand and the cost per homeowner per two-month water billing cycle is eleven dollars and twenty cents. Building department, this fund represents all building inspections, permit management, plan review and consulting services. The DDA represents the business district on Jefferson Avenue, capturing taxes that are reinvested into the district. The Tifa district represents the residential and commercial properties from Jefferson to Mac and Weber to Beacon Field. Funds three oh, three oh five through three oh eight. So we have different accounts and fund three oh five. The principal and interest payment for this bond is six hundred sixteen thousand. And so this was in part due to purchases of homes and for helping out with takeout Emerald ash trees that, you know, were hit by the Emerald Ash for. Fun three oh six is our road millage and this is about six hundred seventy-three thousand. That was passed on by the voters and it expires in two thousand twenty-eight, correct Jane?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Fun three oh seven, construction loan, that is for the city hall project that's ongoing right now. We've already completed the windows. We've completed the roof. And currently, right now, we're working on HVAC, heating and cooling for efficiency that is really going to help out our city hall as, you know, oftentimes we'll have areas that are cold and hot and it'd be better to manage those. So hopefully we can bring down some costs on the energy side of things. The Tifa construction loan, as I discussed earlier, is approximately three hundred one thousand, which is paying for the four million dollar Tifa building or D V W building. And that will be paid off in two thousand thirty-six. And now our capital improvement fund or fund four oh one. Capital improvements, these come from, are actually transferred to the city general fund. And so we'll go through those later and we'll go add a couple items that are new. But in this fiscal year budget, we have less capital improvement requests than we did the last year. Last year, we had a pretty high amount of requests and a lot of that is through maintenance items and such over time. And obviously you'll see as much here, but with the challenges we have in the budget, you know, we had to make certain sacrifices that are what are the absolute priority in need of the community. And so looking at that further is going to be very important. One of the things that I'm currently working with my assistant city manager, Warren Rothe, is that it's going to be important for this city council and the budget moving forward is we establish a capital improvement plan so that we have a five-year plan looking at all departments, public works, public safety, parks and rec of looking at when we're budgeting for these expenses, we're already trying to prepare and get ahead of the game. Because this is only just going to get more and more challenging as the years go ahead. And so this is something I'm going to be bringing to the city council in the coming months for your review and consideration. Water and sewer fund, G L W A increased the rates for July one, two thousand twenty-two. And we have passed on those rates, which is about a hundred twenty-four thousand dollar increase. Baker Tilly, which the city council approved of their services, will be coming to the city council more than likely in the summertime to review our utility rate structure and have our fun and have our discussions, which more than likely later in the year, we'll be looking at probably amending those water and sewer rates even more to go inside with those capital costs of what we have on the infrastructure side. Before I get into the general fund and just kind of provide some line item, you know, discussions, there any questions or concerns or comments from council?
Questions?
None? Okay, so we're in the general fund right now. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of things in here and then I'll go through a couple and stop. And if at that point, if council has any questions or concerns, you know, please bring those up in Jane, and I will be happy to answer. Our current property taxes are about six point nine million. As you'll note, the public safety millage is about one point eight right now, in which a lot right now that's the pension costs are going there right now and that pension costs keep rising. Our sales and use tax, which is the state shared revenue is about one point two million. And right now, we're, we're looking at that surplus appropriation are adding into this general fund for revenues. We're looking at about one million seventy-six thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars. And so council, you'll have reflected that Jane sent over a couple more additions or subtractions that were able to reduce that number. Council, you'll see under that line item that there's a code recodification. The ordinance review committee has discussed further of obviously updating ordinances and zoning and recodifying our codes so that it's easy for commercial and residential to be able to easily see, you know, if there's a code or zoning that they need to go to. That's a snap of a finger, just by one touch of, you know, inputting a word compared to right now, we have a ordinance that's, thanks to the help of Bodman, that they've been able to assist us further in obviously producing our ordinances. And now it's to make it a little easier for everybody to be able to search for all those. Municipal court, we're looking at a pretty status quo. There's a couple of fringe benefits that have obviously increased that requested budget from three forty-two to three no, three ninety-one. The manager, that is my department as well as Mr. Rothe. You'll see that that actually has gone down a little bit because we're looking to actually have some of Mr. Rothe's salary charged into the Tifa because he, he'll be considered for the Tifa director. And so that'll be a role that I'm relinquishing. And Mr. Rothe will be looking to handle that, obviously pending Tifa approval. In the public service department, you'll note that our, we, there is a slight increase there from three eighty-nine to four hundred twenty thousand. Elections, the elections went down because this is an off-election year and that we're not having a city election or a general election or a federal. And then before I get into my financial administration, is there any questions or comments regarding any of those right now?
I have one.
Sure.
So we talked, we talked about elections.
Yeah.
There's a school board election coming up. Will we be working polls for that or will there be anything? Do we need a budget anything for that?
Oh, yeah. No, we have it here right now. So Jane, those will all be down over at Lavens Center, Tompkins Center, right? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I was just looking at, just to clarify there, but typically in some, in the federal and state years, they're even higher because we need more staff and more people for it. Yeah. Okay. Under financial administration, that is Jane's department, we're looking at a slight increase there from three twenty-four to three fifty-five as well. We have in the city clerks department, there's actually a slight decrease over there from one ninety-five of the twenty-one, twenty-two original budget, which is on your left-hand side. And then at the right-hand side is a requested budget of the twenty-two, twenty-three. Public safety is the, is the biggest expense within our, within our budget right now. We're expecting potentially about two to three retirements that are upcoming in this fiscal year. And so obviously there will be a further discussion moving forward of how we allocate our public safety resources. And you'll note as well, those salaries of full-time employees have certainly gone up, one of those being that we are at high staffing levels right now where we have four platoons with seven members on a shift, as well as hiring Chief Gerald, which was on with this budget. We also hired one new P S O officer, Corey Farmer, who that is reflected in here. You'll note the fringe benefit costs in twenty-one, twenty-two were about three point three and now it went to roughly close to three point seven of those fringe benefit costs. We did increase as well the training budget, which is something that Chief Gerald and Deputy Chief Fossett really requested that we consider moving forward of just, you know, gradually increasing that training budget, which is going to assist our officers and E M Ts and such. Make sure they can get the best training possible. Our public works department, you'll note that there's a slight reduction over in the public works department from three forty-two to three twenty-nine. Our tree maintenance department, that is staying close to status quo. Our parks department, there's a sizable increase in there due to the salary of temporary employees and other fringe benefits. And I'll discuss further where we get into recreation where obviously not only is Gross Point Park being challenged, but other communities right now of hiring lifeguards and other part-time employees to work jobs right now, especially with the rate of inflation that we're really competing against, you know, private organizations and other entities that are, you know, providing minimum wages of such a close to fifteen or more, which is certainly providing much of a challenge to this community right now in, in bringing in those young people that are able to do the jobs that, you know, we enjoy of being able to go into the pool on a nice hot day in the summer, which I really look forward to down the road. Any other questions regarding any of those line items right now or departments? Counselor, did you have, oh, you just, okay. And then so we'll move on to the Lavens.
Just real quick on the tree maintenance, I mean, is that a shared service between other gross points?
Yes, that is a shared service right now. We do have city forester Brian Coulter, who is also shared with Gross Point Farms and Gross Point City.
Okay. And so then these numbers reflect that, sure.
Yes. So moving on to the Lavens Fitness Center, you'll see that there's actually a slight reduction over there in the Lavens Fitness Center. Some part of it is due to movie rental fees, but there was also an increase of temporary employees. And again, that's part of that bringing in young people and others to work on those temporary jobs that were certainly challenged with right now. However, there is also great opportunity within the Lavens Fitness Center that, you know, we can really look to increase those revenues, not only in the movie theaters, but also of classes and other opportunities that need may be. And so in the coming months ahead, one of my duties will be is working further with the Parks and Recreation Department to see about how we can gain additional revenue into here and how we can allocate those resources and really take a fine tooth comb through, you know, a process that, you know, maybe we're not doing it as best as possible. We need to be a little more lean and efficient, which such. So this is something I really look forward to. And obviously, I know members of council, you're certainly at the parks and such. So if you have any ideas or thoughts and processes, those would be most helpful. So thank you very much. Planning and landscaping, those are for supplies for gardening department that we have over in Parks and Recreation. Next line item, you'll note a fringe benefits. Our health insurance cost went up from about one point eight to two million. We share that risk with all the other gross points. We're part of a coalition working with a company by the name of Manquance. And workers count, you'll see that there is a little increase from one twenty to one eighty-seven. And we'll see what there. In the retirement city share, which is the pension, you're seeing at about two point two right over there. Any questions regarding those? Yeah, no problem. That's why we're here.
I just noticed under tree maintenance, and maybe you said it, I missed it. I see this big jump from on the French benefits from ninety-six to one sixty. Did you say that was due to the temporary, I mean, for the was that because of the temporary employees, but?
You said in tree maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, tree maintenance, we're going from like
Tree maintenance on parks.
Ninety-six to one.
Oh, under parks.
Under parks, sorry.
Yeah.
It just looks like a big jump.
Oh, you're seeing right here in the fringe benefits from ninety-six to a hundred sixty. Okay. All right. I thought you meant the tree maintenance.
Yeah.
No, it's under parks, actually.
If you don't have the answer now.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, taking over that, yeah. Then as I discussed further, um, the general fund transfer, um, from the capital improvement fund last year or twenty twenty. Twenty one, twenty two buzzer budget was about seven hundred ninety seven thousand. Now we're looking at about six hundred seventy thousand. So being that we're discussing the capital improvement fund, let's go and flip in our books to that capital improvement fund. And so we can discuss a couple items there. And then we'll actually go back later and I'll go through a couple of them as need be. I'll just highlight a couple of them. And obviously, if there's questions or clarification, please ask. Um, you'll note that vehicles for public safety, uh, that that item has stayed the same. That is replacing three public safety vehicles. Uh, that has been. Uh, tradition that we've done, uh, for the last several years. Um, and they're actually looking at, uh, down the road too, if seeing it maybe switching from the Explorer to Tahoe's down the road. Is also a better opportunity for us because at the end of that, uh, vehicle's, uh, shelf life, there's actually a better resale value of the Tahoe. Rather than the Explorer, um. And then you'll see the installment purchase principle and installment installment purchase principal contract. That's roughly about a hundred sixty thousand. That is for this city hall bond project here. Uh, the two other very large items that you will know or most know is the Lavens Center roof replacement, which is about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we have the Lavens Activity Center has been open since two thousand two, three, Jane? Okay, two thousand three. That is the original roof of the building of the Lavens Center. So over the years. Uh, parks, maintenance staff, as well as public works have been doing their best to patch the roof, you know, and and obviously try to maintain it. But we're at the point of its shelf life that, uh, we need to replace that, which will certainly help bring down any future costs. If we have leaking that are going into our facilities, which is only gonna increase further of those repairs and maintenance. Uh, you'll note also this Lavens Center, uh, sun deck. Uh, this is actually, if you're out in the McKeever Lounge, you walk out from the McKeever Lounge to the outside. That sun deck area, um, is badly in need of repair. There's crumbling concrete there right now. Right below that is actually some of our pool, um, pool housing. And so during the summer months and then especially in the winter, you get that freeze thaw, which then leaks onto our equipment and such. And we certainly want to protect that so we can, uh, you know, keep it shelf life even longer. Um, a couple of things, uh, note that we also, uh, look to, uh, actually, uh, cut within the capital improvement plan was noted by Jane. Um, the Lavens Center, uh, refinishing that gym floor, which is about thirteen thousand five hundred. We can actually, uh, move that to about the next year. It's not a, uh, a huge priority at this time that we need to do that. Um, retaining wall around Lavens Center that we're gonna look to reduce that rate from thirty thousand to five thousand, uh, to be able to assist there further. And obviously, um, you know, other things of note we have is, uh, council approved the fitness center equipment lease. And also you'll note a couple of other items for public safety in here, city website, offices and et cetera. Any comments or discussions regarding the capital improvement? Let's see, one.
Thank you. Um, I just noticed that I know Chad came to council and talked about the town court.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We are going to, yeah, he does have quotes for it right now. Um, and so he does have a company lined up, Jane. He's got them coming in May or June. Yeah. Yeah. So it's in, it's in this current. Yeah, it was budgeted last year.
Well, that's great. That's good. That'll make a lot of people happy. And then I see, uh, landscape consulting storage is off from twenty eight to zero.
Yes.
That is.
That's the Phil Peters property.
And that's all I think you.
Okay.
Maybe we can get lower than one eighty for a replacement. That feels like it's high, but I don't know much about.
Certainly, uh, we can, uh, see if, uh, while Chad's looking at those quotes too, if that, you know, he did want to go a little higher just in case, you know, with, uh. You know, what's going on right now and these costs are going up. And actually, the challenge of, you know, when you're getting bids right now, they might only last for thirty days. And then those increases are going. And so this is certainly, uh, something that, um, you know, I'd I'd like to keep a higher just in case. But hopefully, you know, I I certainly want to go below that threshold. All right, seeing no other questions, we're gonna now go to, um, we're gonna go back if you flip your book to major, which is actually the major street fund. Right now, um, and again, that's about eleven point sixty nine, um, uh, miles of, uh, major roads, uh, within Grosse Pointe Park. And we're looking at about a hundred seventy five thousand is gonna be put into the major, uh, roads fund. Moving on to local roads, which is our next item is about twenty five miles of roads. And we're looking at about four hundred thirty five thousand as part of those improvements. Uh, my focus area, uh, I should say, our focus area of Grosse Pointe Park right now is that we really need to do a dive into the alleys. Uh, into Grosse Pointe Park. And this is something that, uh, we've been doing a pretty good job over the years with the local road village of. Working on our local streets, but we really need to assist further with the alleys. And moving into further in our discussion, um, I'll be discussing further about the opportunities that our park, public works department is gonna be doing in house. They actually separate several of those alleys and maybe there's opportunities with us as well with the water sewer fund. That we might be able to, uh, separate more alleys or even in the locals. Uh, moving on to rubbish, oh, sorry, Congressman Gallagher, do you have a? I saw, I guess. Yeah.
I don't answer always though.
Okay, uh, moving on to the rubbish fund, uh, you'll note that there is an increase, uh, there. And obviously, some of this is reflected due to the. Increase from the, um, uh, green for life, uh, as well, uh, actually for informational purposes. Um, we have the actual, um, rubbish collection knowledge for Grosse Pointe Park is about three mils. And what are we at now, Jane? About half of that? It's now four two oh nine. One and a half. Yeah.
One point five six.
Okay, so you can see again that challenge where, you know, our charter allowed us for three mils, but we're we're capped right now at that number too, so certainly. And this is something that, um, you know, over the years, uh, you know, other gross points have, uh, done their own service. But we looked at that it actually is a savings for us right now to still, uh, contract that service out. Part of those funds as well in there include, um, leaf pickup. And for those wages for, uh, public, public works that also are helping with the, uh, leaf pickup. Yeah, chipper truck and such too. Uh, flipping over to the building department, uh, you'll note that there is a, um, additional revenue, uh, from about three oh four to three thirty five. In our next budget, in our building inspection department, uh, there was, um, a a sizable, uh, amount for, uh, salaries. And this was part of and due to, um, uh, obviously with, uh, code enforcement, we were challenged at of having, um, hiring a code enforcement officer. So we actually had to hire, um, McKenna and Associates to help us on a temporary basis as well, uh, for code enforcement. But now the city has actually hired a official that is our code enforcement officer, and he will also be doing rental inspections as well. So one of the areas that of note and has been brought to, uh, our councils, discussed this of the past and now. Is really for the increase of code enforcement. Uh, we typically in the past have had about two or three days a week that we had code enforcement. Now we're looking at four, potentially five days a week that we'll be able to have this, uh, gentleman out there. So not only while he's reviewing a home for a rental or C of O inspection. He's also gonna be noting the home to see if there's any code violations and such. And obviously, for safety and cleanup and such. It's really gonna help our community and beautify it more that if we can get, you know, tackles both at once, I think it's a real, when I discuss lean and efficient. These are one of those opportunities that I'm really excited about that's gonna help our city. Uh, moving on next to the Downtown Development Authority, which will be having a meeting, uh, to discuss this budget. Um, I'll go over a couple highlights, uh, green infrastructure is something that I discussed at a downtown development authority meeting. Regarding bioswells and, uh, other rain guards that might be able to help out with our, um, uh, these storm events that are happening more and more frequent. Uh, you'll note there's legal services, landscape maintenance is for, uh, Southern Gardener, which actually helps out our. Uh, boulevards over on Jefferson and the easements over there. And then you'll note a civic campus parking lot, um, line item, which is forty five thousand that I budgeted for. And this is for the agreement that, uh, the Downtown Development Authority and the Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation entered into. For in the future, um, it more than likely it'll be probably in about two years that the DDA will look to build a parking lot over there. Which is obviously a real opportunity, not only for the DDA, but for residents of this community, that when the future SCAP Center comes online. As well as other future city events that we might be able to use on our front, um, uh, entranceway on Jefferson. So that's certainly in there, uh, DDA director is helping part of my duties, which I'll be continuing on those duties as the DDA director. And wayfinding entrance signs, which is newer, what does wayfinding mean? Well, what this means is that as you're entering into our community, uh, or exiting, you know. It is entrance signs and welcoming signs of, you know, welcome to Grosse Pointe Park, or here's where you park, you know. And we need to really increase our presence there in Jefferson, especially their new city logo. So I think this is an opportunity to beautify with the DDA. Any questions regarding the DDA?
Thanks, Tim. Um, I see civic camp, so this civic campus parking lot was fifty grand last year, but we haven't spent all that. What are the intentions for that?
So what with these monies, council member Rayland, is we're budgeting for this, uh, parking lot that obviously, um. We're gonna look to build in several years from now. So we're, we're just taking those monies, budgeting for it and setting it aside. So when we do have, um, when we're building that, we do have the monies to be able to help build that parking lot. In addition to that agreement that the DDA entered into, there's also gonna be an amount of two hundred thousand, which is gonna help towards that parking lot.
Okay, uh, is there any way to ask the DA to fix our current parking lot?
We're talking the city hall parking lot right here?
It better use the funds rather than building something that doesn't exist yet, putting money aside for something that doesn't exist yet. And that hasn't been brought to the, the attention of our residents yet. I know we have a residence meeting for this parking lot coming up. And there's a lot of people that aren't happy with it. Um, I I would rather use that money to fix our current parking lot. That's been bad since. I don't know how long. It's it's, like I say, it feels like India driving through our parking lot here, city hall. I don't know how to how to go about that, but I will not be voting for this, for this parking lot with this budget if that stays in there. I know you know as well as I know that there's a lot of residents over a hundred that have emailed us saying that they're just dissatisfied with how the DDA is spending that money towards parking lot. So I don't know what our thoughts are on that. If we can remove that from this budget, because DDA hasn't, the other thing I want to ask is that, what is the charter for the DDA's budget? Because they haven't proposed yet, right?
That's correct.
So what is our charter stating? We have to, do they have to approve it first and then come to us? I know we talked minimally about it last week, but.
Yeah, it it's not in the charter, it's by statute. But so, right, so they propose a budget, you approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then it goes, they're the, they they adopt it, I think we're gonna adopt it by another vote, so it's like a three step process. Yeah. Um, and that's all, that's all by statute.
Okay, so it's okay for us to approve it today without them even seeing it?
You're just reviewing, this is a.
You're gonna have a meeting with them.
Yes. Before, before we have our main ninth meeting where, you know. They'll have the opportunity to review and approve in for consideration or if there's comments, you know, of that.
So they get it, then it comes back to you.
Okay.
Yep.
And has that meeting date been set?
So it's gonna be set for next week.
Next week.
Yeah.
So we should have the residents that have been emailing us what that note to go to DDA to show their disapproval with this.
Well, it's gonna be advertised on the city website and, you know, on Facebook that there is this DDA meeting. You'll have the budget. Which actually, you know, very similar to this one, which will show also with a graph too of, you know, what we've spent and, you know, what we're looking at for the next year. So it'll be available online and for those residents to be able to attend.
Okay.
And just for clear, did you say we've got over a hundred emails against the parking lot?
We've gotten that that boat that had fifty or sixty.
Okay.
From Mr. Manager.
I I haven't, not of an email of a hun- I haven't gotten a hundred emails, but if you're reflecting. The, you're all the petition that came to. Yeah.
And that's just from the people that know. I don't think our city knows what's going on with that park, with that great space, so. Okay, but point of clarity though, I, because this is, you know, and we don't have to discuss it here, this is budget, but we do have an agreement with DDA on that already.
Well, we we depends, you, DDA has. DDA has an agreement with the SCAP Center.
The point being, we're legally obligated, the DDA is legally obligated to fulfill that parking lot expectation as part of that MOU, correct?
There's a.
That's correct. And and that space we're talking about it, you know, forgive me, and we can move on from this, we can talk, but has that ever been deemed? That's been a commercial zone a lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, always has been.
Yeah, okay. I'd have to check this out, but.
Point being, multiple uses would be suited for that location that we would be legally obligated to allow, assuming it was within the code.
Right.
Correct.
Right. And just for clarity, it's been a point of contention before and people have questioned my conclusion on this, but I'm right. The city does not have to follow the zoning code. The state law is very clear. It would be very difficult for cities that have limited real estate resources to do or build anything if they had to follow. All of the zoning codes. So it's not that we shouldn't try to adhere to land use master plan in good practices. But just from a legal perspective, the zoning issue is not critical to the determination of what happens. No, there's still a governmental agency. It does, that does not, that, what I just said does not only apply to the city. I can get it, I'll, I can further clarify that. So the the same, the same rule that would apply to a city would apply to.
To the.
Separate but related entities of like a DDA or a TIPA or a county government or some. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to the Tax Income Finance Authority. Um, which will be in our next, uh, flipping over, uh, you'll note that there's an increase of salaries, um, over there. And part of those wages are, uh, will be a part of Warren's salary, uh, part of my salary as well and that of, um, uh, Jane's as well. And financial administration that's helping to prepare this, uh, TIPA budget and of, um, uh, purchase orders and such. Um, you'll note too that it it actually looks like it says grant program in the activity. It looks low. And that's because all the checks have not been processed yet for all the, uh, residential and the business improvement grants. I would say roughly right now, this is just a rough guess without having a number in front of me. It's been about over fifty thousand that we approved of. Residential and business improvement grants. Um, you'll see in the requested budget, we do have a capital for a parking capital improvement. And some of those, uh, could be for the addition of, uh, working either at the, uh, Point Hardware Parking Lot or the TIPA Parking Lot that's across from there. As well as further considerations for parking meters. Engineering, professional services, you'll see is eighty five thousand, uh, as I discussed further, that will be for part of, uh, OHM advisors fees. And other professional services, you know, contractual services that may be needed for the TIPA. As I discussed with Gardening Department as an example, that might be able to assist in watering the flower pots and, you know, maintenance of MAC. Um, charlevoy and of, uh, curcable. Uh, you'll note as well that we do have a couple items in here that are gonna be assisting the DVW. Uh, for equipment needs, which is a fuel system, uh, which will be onsite, a mobile lift, which actually helps to lift the vehicles, uh, back and forth. Um, you know, within there, uh, the installment purchase contract of three hundred one thousand is the bond payment for the TIPA building. And then you'll also note, um, I added new items in here for the TIPA's consideration, um, social district. And alley improvements, I thought is part of, uh, Grosse Pointe Park is is the only gross point that has a social district right now. That just of updating, uh, you know, signage and and just advertisements that would be real beneficial for the TIPA. And alley improvements is also an area that I know, uh, after the flooding events and also, uh, considering of looking at our alleys moving forward. That maybe there's opportunities working with the Beautification Commission and other groups to for alleys and, um, you know, uh, I know Vacas. You, I think you and I have talked about before, we're, you know, like best alley and things like that of just cleaning up moving forward. That maybe the TIPA will be able to help assist in that or being able to separate, um, you know, most alleys which are, uh, currently, some of those are, uh, combined right now.
Yeah, you mentioned some of that coming from the local fund as well, the local street.
Yes. For paving, yeah. Right.
Are we going back to that law? Are we looking to hit every alley?
So, uh, budget wise, we're gonna do what we can right now and Councilman Viner, correct me, because he's been very involved with this. But we actually have, I think, in-house about three or four alley blocks that DBW is gonna be able to do in-house and that's budgeted for. But we're gonna look to obviously see if we can add more depending on budget. These ones would require actually us to probably contract out because they're much larger and, yeah, a little bit more challenge for DBW to be able to handle. Yeah, was I right on that, Counselor Viner? Okay, all right. Okay.
Oh, shoot, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, so I I thought we, I thought last year we agreed that all the money from TIPA would go to the DPW. Am I wrong on that?
Uh, I don't believe there was any.
No.
Vote of council on that.
Cause they're gonna be dumping another hundred grand in about the four million they already promised.
Well, that that's for the building itself. These are for oper- the, these are for actual, um, you know, purchases that they need. Otherwise, if we were, we're not to ask TIPA to do this, this would be spent out of the city general fund, which would certainly, obviously, you know, add more to. Obviously, you know, add more to that shortfall that we have right now.
Yeah, and we had discussions on that, they, the DPW services the whole city, so the whole city should be paying for it, or these, this money should be approved, improving the TIF like. Like the alley that we're talking about, um I just wanna make sure, I didn't know if I remember that or not.
Well, just to make sure that's clarified, it it's been determined that that's an appropriate.
It's appropriate to use.
Legally, yeah, so it's not a concern.
Yeah, it's a legal equation, I understand, I'm just saying, for what I'm saying, TIF money should be improving the entire cabbage patch, no, no, something like that, but. I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Where's, no, cause you brought up some, where, where, where's the hundred?
I'm sorry, the fuel system DPW and the mobile lift.
Yes, okay. Yeah.
Alright, so that's ten, ten percent of their, of their budget.
Moving on to um. Uh department or DEXA three oh five, three oh seven, three oh eight. Actually, did I miss uh? Yep, I missed one, so we'll go, sorry about that, uh to two sixty, two sixty-five and two seventy-five. Uh two sixty is our indig- indigent uh defense grant, which uh this is for a court appointed attorney uh for your municipal court. Uh drug law, law enforcement or better, or better known as asset forfeiture. Uh you'll note in there that there was no activity this year, but however, we're still gonna request a budget of about three thousand dollars. Moving into C D G or community.
One question regarding the DPW. No, you didn't at all, I uh took me a minute to find what my question, but in the general fund under public works, we have DPW moving expenses left, the current fiscal year was at fourteen K. And zeroed out for this year, I assumed that was because it was gonna show up in the TIF a budget, but I don't see it there, we. Which the.
What you looking at?
So I'm in general fund, public works, DPW moving expenses with fourteen K and the current FY. And it's zeroed out for the next, the current, the F, the, for twenty.
You haven't spent the fourteen thousand, I recall that in the TIF a meeting last year, for what you're referring to, the fourteen is charged to TIF up. And you felt, you know, people felt strongly that it should have been moved to general fund. It was DDA.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
So we didn't spend the money in the current year yet, they're still planning on doing it, it just hasn't been done yet.
Okay, so so you're just carrying over that same amount, we don't need to allocate additional funds, is that correct?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, oh, CD uh community development block grant, so uh this is a federal program that is passed down to the state, it passed down to Wayne County. And uh Gross Point Park and the other communities, we've got about twenty thousand dollars, which is uh used for uh senior bus transportation or Pats. And for the helm over in Gross Point Farms for uh senior services. And that's just, that's just something we pass along, we receive the money, we pass it along uh over to the helm. Uh three oh five bond issue, um as you'll know, this is the um uh bond that was used for uh purchasing of city homes uh right during the recession. Uh so that they actually would um uh at the time and Jane would be able to better explain the methodology behind it, but it was. Was it, it was about two thousand and seven, right during.
Right, you purchased homes that were in foreclosure, and when the city owned those homes, those sales studies weren't set against our factor. That would lower our C P I.
Yeah.
The factor would reduce our value.
Yeah, so that really helped us out as well, because otherwise, you know, we would have lost even more revenues from there and I, and as well, there was the Emerald Ash Trees, um there. Brian told me it was about, excuse me, two hundred and fifty trees we removed from that, so.
And that's included in this.
That's in, that's included, yes. Fires, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-seven, okay, yeah. Uh capital improvement bond series, this is for the um uh city hall building. And so we're, we're almost done with this project, uh we just have uh some HVAC and heating and cooling left and that'll probably be done. Um and that's the one where city council approved Spicer uh to work as our architect and construction manager on hand assisting that. And that currently I have on our city employee, Mike uh Kraus, who handles our maintenance of our facilities um over at city hall and the pump station assisting in this process. And he's been doing a fantastic job, obviously looking at how can we, you know, save on some energy and uh, you know, cause otherwise he's having to. Call the contractors, they're coming in and seems like they're always trying to fix Jane and I's office all the time because it's crazy ninety-five, sixty. I mean, it's kinda nuts, so we're working on that.
And that was approved two thousand and nineteen, correct?
That was approved in twenty nineteen, correct me? Yes. Uh DPW Public Works, this is the um uh TIF a bond, uh that was for the uh DPW building. And that is still slated to be completed uh sometime in late June. Now I'll move on to Rhodes real quick, uh Fund three oh six. And so you see in there the requested budget, uh which is part of that is the major in the local streets, about six hundred and seventy-three thousand. We already went through capital improvement, so now we're gonna flip to water and sewer fund. And so you'll know. Our water and sewer charges, uh they went up from about five point three to five point four, which is passing on some of the GLW Great Lakes Water Authority expense. Um and you'll see note of revenues as well. And the sewage disposal, uh sewer charges, you'll know that there's a little bit of an increase there from one point nine to one point nine six. Um also wet well cleanout right below that line item, originally, um Mike Kraus had a budget that we're looking about. Twelve thousand dollar expense, however, due to rising costs and you know prices and such, they do. Tend to jump from time to time, we had to look to go from twelve to thirty just for that expense alone, so. That's certainly something that we wanna do, it's it's very important to have done and that we're, we're adding that into sewage disposal.
Yeah, I see twelve and twelve.
Yeah, so now that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna go to thirty, that's the change, yeah, that's the change. Uh sewer pump station and the next one, you're gonna see a couple items for uh uh maintenance of our facilities specifically. Um three mile station controls, uh adding a budget item for preventive maintenance to their uh system testing of a three mile or storm uh pump station. Uh pump station flooring and windows, which right now we have a lot of leaks that are actually getting into our pump station. Excuse me, during storm events in cracked flooring right now, that's unsafe to walk on in certain areas. And also as floor drains, that's another item that uh we wanna budget and clean out those uh areas there. Uh moving on to water department, which is right below, uh you'll note the water charges went from about one point four. One million four twenty-four thousand to one million four sixty-seven thousand, again, that's part of that GLWA passing along that cost of. On the water in the sewer side, which I said earlier is a total water and sewer, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh moving on to our next item, uh which is five nine two water and sewer fund, uh you're gonna look at in notes, um I want you to actually look at the sweeper. Uh that is a two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, uh this is an expense that we have a street sweeper that's close to probably thirty years old. Um and certainly, uh we have been challenged, but we have a very talented mechanic that has saved its life for a couple more years, but it's beyond that life now. And hydraulic fluid and oil is leaking, so obviously, um you know, we're looking to purchase this uh uh piece of uh. Uh this vehicle and it's gonna last around for another twenty-five, thirty years, so it's gonna be helpful obviously for cleaning our streets and maintenance. And then you'll notice well, council right below, there's a seven thousand dollars and that's part of that Michigan plan that was from Baker Tilly. And as well, um something to note, obviously, as we're doing all of this work on, you know, our real core focus is on the water and sewer fund. Obviously, we do have some preventive maintenance items that we're looking at right now and a couple other opportunities, we do have um pipe tech that's currently cleaning. Sewers right now, all forty-one miles of such, in that, you know, after their review of all those sewers that we might obviously have some further expenses that we need to consider. And so if there is an opportunity that, you know, I shouldn't say that, when there's the opportunity that we need to go in and fix these items. We do have uh in unrestricted our water sewer fund about one point eight million, close to one point nine, that if we need to make those expenses for, you know, um. Uh maintenance, we can do so as well, one of the things that uh we're certainly very excited and aggressively watching our emails for right now. Is all that money that came from the federal and then passed down to the state government through Eagle of creating those programs. That we can uh look to obviously assist of our um sewer endeavors in water uh in the Gross Point Park. We also did apply for and council looked at back in uh twenty twenty or it was twenty-one. Uh drinking water revolving fund loan, which was a program for looking at our water uh maintenance, so this was lead service lines. Um uh water mains and such that right now we're, we're in the scoring department, but. They're still having determined whether or not that scoring means that we could get funding, so we're still waiting for that right now. The good news is, is that with all this money coming down uh to the communities that more than likely, you know, there will be some opportunities that we'll have. For monies within the water sewer side, obviously, um you know, from Eagle, we're gonna look at the federal government, we also happen to have um. Some philanthropic partners that are certainly looking to help out as well, which is certainly gonna assist uh for uh infrastructure and truly a um. A a tr- amazing, you know, that uh, you know, the philanthropy community is looking at that, that not only is, you know, our parks so valuable. And our other assets with our community that obviously, you know, infrastructure is on everybody's mind right now. And to that extent that they're even considering this is just truly a uh a dream come true for a city manager. Going on to Marina Fund. Uh you'll, you'll note that uh there is a little bit of an increase uh from the original budget from three oh seven to three twenty-three. For the last three years, we have been increasing the uh boatwell rates at about a five percent rate and we're gonna look to continue to do such and obviously. I know, um you know, members of the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Marina Subcommittee are gonna be further discussing opportunities with the Marina. And right now, by building up this five percent, we actually now at our unrestricted uh reserves of about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, so. Certainly that's gonna help out moving forward, but obviously as well, we need to have a game plan moving forward and that's something that we're looking at strongly. I know Councilmember Caulfield and I and other members of the Parks and Rec Committee and Subcommittee. Uh need to work on the city asset, because right now, uh it it, you know, there is some trouble with it, we're doing what we can maintenance wise, but we need to have a. Long-term plan moving forward of what we're gonna do with this uh uh piece of property there, there's approximately about two hundred and sixty-nine boat, boat wells over there. Um comparing us to the other gross point communities, we are the lowest of the gross points. Right now, even though we keep increasing by five percent, we'll still, we're still at the lowest amount, and if you look across the board at private, um the um. Uh marinas and Tom, correct me on any of these, but obviously we have Jefferson Marina or Jefferson Beach and um. A couple others that we've been looking at too, that obviously uh down the road, um you know, we're, keep increasing those prices so that um, you know, we can assist with. Uh fixing the Marina. Any questions, comments on a couple of those I ran through? Yes.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. What?
Come on, there's gotta be something else.
Okay.
I, I would like to say, but James, it's very detailed and laid out, so, thank you. Yeah, I want to, I'd like to say thank you too to the other questions as well, and also the line items.
Yeah, no problem, and and I'll say a personal thank you to Jane and obviously the department head staff, they were really helpful. Working with us as a team and identifying those opportunities that obviously we need to look to fix, but as well making those tough choices and sacrifices that. You know, as much as uh, you know, there's, there's, there's wants and there's needs and this is what is our job as a community and of the city administration to prioritize those needs and wants. And so, um again, thank you, Jane.
Well, you clearly have a command of the information and you have worked very hard to get it to this point, so thank you for that and it's obvious to me, this is a. Need to have, not a nice to have budget, is where we need to be and this is not a kick the can down the road council either, so. We know we have some decisions to make, um the goal of course uh is to be an impenetrable fortress of. Good financial standing in my mind and ours uh as well, and I think we're ardently working toward that uh with this budget. And we've got the team to get us there, uh that's not only our staff, but it's our service providers in the community and each of you, so. I think it's time to get to work, there are lots to consider in the next couple of weeks and then over the next few years. Gotta commit to a long-term plan, we've gotta deal with structural issues and uh the community needs to know that this communities or this council is very focused on that. Um and we will get where we need to be.
Absolutely.
This is a step in that direction, so if there aren't any additional comments, I mean, we really did get done in a jiffy. Well, there's not, one moment, Mr., there's not a public comment, um. I, you know, just to be consistent and to be fair and to be good meeting, we're, we're here for you um and happy to answer any questions you may have. Afterward, and if you want something to become part of the public record, there will be the public hearing um in May, okay, thank you. Motion by Relin, uh is there a second, Councilman Gallagher at uh eight oh five, is there any discussion from that? Okay, Claire, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Yes.
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 Yeah, okay, who's got the draft off?
Yes, well, I just thought that's right for draft. Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
No.